I'd like to call the July 27 meeting of the Peters Township Council to order. Roll call, Mr. Lauer.
Mrs. Merrill.
President.
Mr. Stile.
Here.
Mr. Ball.
President.
Mr. Merkwee.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first item of business today is a public hearing for proposed ordinance repealing and replacing Section 44700, which is signage and public displays. Mr. Lauer?
Yes, before I turn this over to Mr. Coons, I do want to enter into the record two pieces of correspondence that we received. The first is an email from Tandy Arty expressing concern about restrictions on for lease signs. The second is an email from Laura Ashworth, also expressing concerns about restrictions on for lease signs. With that, I'm going to turn it over.
Paul, can I ask one question about that?
Yes.
So, the signs that they're, they have up currently, they've been there for some time, or they put them up when they have vacancies?
Here's, and Seth's going to show you some examples in the slides. The concern is that what you see on the Route 19 corridor are for lease signs that are temporary signs, some of which have been up as long as I have worked here.
Yeah, that's my, that's my.
In fact, when, when, the last sign Seth's going to show you has been up so long that the letters have faded on the sign. They give you an idea how long the sign's been up.
Thank you.
But then, I'm going to turn it over to Seth.
Good evening, members of council.
You can take your mask off if you want to speak.
I got, I have a one-month-old baby at the house, so I'm going to take as many precautions as I can to pardon my class.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Feel free to stick around afterwards for a while.
We'll cover for you.
A little background of why I'm here this evening. In 2015, if you're aware, the Supreme Court made a kind of a landmark ruling in the case of the Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona. In this case, the Supreme Court provided guidance on which municipalities throughout the United States can and cannot impose content-based regulations on signage.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble following you, Seth. Since you're wearing a mask, which is great, if you could maybe slug down.
Sure, sure.
Very clear for me. Thank you.
The sign you see on the right here is actually the catalyst for the entire case. This is all precipitated on a sign that was located in a right-of-way adjacent to another sign of a similar size. One was allowed to be up for a certain amount of time, the other wasn't, purely based on content. And an argument against that ruling went all the way up to the United States Supreme Court. Based on this, this ruling in 2015, we've kind of taken a look at the township sign ordinance with our solicitor and determined that, yes, in fact, we do have a number of content-based regulations throughout our existing ordinance. For example, real estate signs, which you put up to advertise real estate, whether that's commercial or residential. Personal expression signs, and in the ordinance, it states that you can have a sign in your front yard that lists anything of any personal expression. I mean, that is clearly content-based or directional signs. So, under this guidance, you know, is our ordinance considered to be unconstitutional? It's kind of difficult to say at this point. It may or may not be, but ultimately, what the Supreme Court left us with is that these sign ordinances have to survive strict scrutiny, the highest level of scrutiny in regard to this ruling. Some of the key changes that I'm going to be walking us through this evening, just a lot of them have to do with these content-based regulations, and I'll kind of describe those maybe a little bit more here in the next couple of slides. But really, what we're talking about is either removing or adjusting definitions for sign types because they currently aren't defined based on content, and removing or replacing or revising regulations for those types of signs. And to replace those regulations that we remove, we're proposing some content-neutral regulations that primarily focus on size, location, frequency, and duration. And then we're making some additional changes throughout the ordinance for things that aren't necessarily content-based, but were deficiencies that staff had recognized or gave us the opportunity to do some restructuring of the ordinance to make it a little bit more user-friendly and cohesive. So, just a quick example, again, of content-based definition and/or regulation. You can see on the screen here are some word-for-word definitions from our sign ordinance. Personal expression signs and political signs, as you can see, are defined based on the content of that sign, which is in clear violation of this Reed versus Gilbert ruling. Therefore, any regulations for these types of signs would also be content-based regulations. So, again, removing these definitions, these regulations, and replacing them with content-neutral in kind. These content-neutral regulations, again, we're looking at size, location, frequency, and duration. The one I kind of hark back to the most is political signs because we kind of hit all four of those criteria when we talk about our new regulations for political signs. What we've done in the new ordinance is craft what we call a political season, and it gives property owners the opportunity to put up additional temporary signs theoretically, regardless of content, because we can't regulate based on the content, but a certain period before an election and a very short amount of time after an election opens it up for these properties to have additional temporary signs, which they could use for political purposes, but they can also use for other purposes as well. Again, most of these content-based regulations in our ordinance are in regard to temporary signs, just because that's the nature of temporary signs. I mean, these permanent monument-style signs and pole signs that go up on commercial sites of interestes to subdivisions and such really don't, in our current ordinance, were never described based on content nor regulated as such. I mean, they were inherently content-neutral from the beginning. Some other changes that we are proposing as part of the ordinance, we've crafted some new figures, which should hopefully make it a little bit more user-friendly for people looking at the signed ordinance at the very beginning to quickly understand, you know, which zoning district I'm in, what sign type I'm potentially wanting to put up, and then what are the basic-level regulations for those types of signs, and then maybe where can I find additional information without really having to weed through the ordinance because it can get a little heavy sometimes. We took a look at flags throughout the township, and we kind of saw the opportunity for a large number of flags to be placed on property, so we decided that we'd like to have a single flag pole on a property with up to two flags on said flag pole, and we think that just gives people plenty of opportunity to put flags up without really having an excessive amount. Electronic variable message signs, this one is somewhat content-based. Currently, we only allow full-color electronic variable message signs along the Route 19 corridor. We're proposing that it's just full color throughout the township. One thing that we heard, we've heard from sign manufacturers is that they're no longer making non-full color because, you know, as we, as technology becomes more advanced and easier to acquire and cheaper to make, it just doesn't make any sense for them not to make these full-color displays anymore. And, you know, we saw the one go up at NSS Life recently, and it's, in staff's opinion, it's a high quality, it's a good-looking sign, and we think, you know, that should be an option for any property throughout the township that is currently able to use electronic variable message signs. Signs for certain types of uses, this predominantly deals with properties owned by local units of government, such as the township property or the school district property, maybe opening up for an additional sign criteria or regulations for potentially larger signs for things such as the new park or the new high school beyond maybe what the ordinance establishes otherwise. And then what Paul had referenced kind of in the beginning, one of the most impactful changes, we think, is regards to temporary signs on properties for sale or those with units for lease. I will get to some pictures here shortly about what these signs look like, and we're effectively, as Paul had said, we've got these temporary signs that have stayed up for years and years and years and become permanent signs, more or less. And so, we're making those non-conforming signs or illegal signs, and then we're opening up the option for those spaces that don't have electronic variable message signs to incorporate some additional temporary signs into either a pole or monument sign following some criteria. So, they can still have the opportunity within their existing signs to potentially use these or potentially put up these for-sale or for-lease signs, or they can do an additional space that is a foot tall in the current ordinance and, you know, put that up against their pole or monument sign to advertise a space for sale or for lease. I will say that in my memo, if you saw, when we took this to Planning Commission, they recommended that that one-foot allowance be increased to two feet. That was kind of a staff recommendation as we went around and did some additional research and saw some of these for-lease and for-signs that were doing it somewhat correctly in these monument signs, they needed just a little bit more space to really make it legible and functional. So, we kind of understood that and recommended that be increased from one feet to two feet. Like I said, we did some reorganization with the ordinance. We got rid of the existing major signs and minor signs and just kind of broke that down into freestanding and attached signs. We were able to.
Freestanding and attached.
Freestanding, yes. Effectively get rid of two whole sections that weren't, you know, really giving us all that much value to make the ordinance just a little bit shorter and easier to digest. After we did our final drafts, final round of ordinance amendments, we sent it to the Chamber of Commerce, and they distributed it to the business community. That's how we got those two emails that Paul entered into the record earlier. We presented those emails to Planning Commission. So, we have given an opportunity for feedback on this proposed ordinance, both to the business community and the Planning Commission, and we think that we've crafted a pretty high-quality ordinance at this point. So, some of these examples of potential non-conforming signs, these for-sale and for-lease signs that would ultimately become non-conforming with this new ordinance, I'm going to go through a number of sides here, but they're all pretty much the same. You know, we've got for-sale, for-lease signs that were temporary at one point, or maybe intent was for them to be temporary, but they have just become, hung around for so long that they have become effectively permanent signs.
Excuse me, before you go on with that.
Yes.
So, if that would happen to be for a vacant property where there is no monument, they would still be held to the two-foot-high size? How would that be handled if it was a vacant property without an existing?
Without an existing, there are options. I mean, they could theoretically apply for a permanent, or they could do.
But I, I don't know that there are any commercial properties on Route 19 that do not have a sign for their site. I don't think that exists on Route 19.
It may not now, but perhaps it would exist somewhere else beneath the, or any of the other potential business unit, business areas. I was just trying to get an idea of the alternative for people. Okay, you can continue. Go ahead.
Seth?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, excuse me for going back to the beginning, but you were talking about signs expressing points of view, interest, political signs, et cetera.
Yes.
You were talking about limiting the time that they could be up, time that they could be up. What did you have in mind for that?
Well, so, there's kind of two parts to that in our new ordinance. First of all, we're still allowing for most properties to have an exempt sign that is, I believe, three square feet in size, which could theoretically replace these personal expression signs. In addition to that, the temporary sign figures towards the back of the ordinance reference, this political season, our time period on that would be three months in advance of a primary or general election, up to one week after. For residential districts, those types of signs could be three square feet in size, which is a typical yard sign for political signs. You'd have to be six feet back from the curb, you could not, you couldn't light them up, but you could have.
Or could.
What's that?
Did you say could it or could?
You could not, they could not be illuminated, and you could have two additional signs per property during that three-month period.
Okay. Have you looked at specific law pertaining to political signs?
Well, I mean, this, this case, the Supreme Court case, you know, is a blanket law case over all content-based regulations. So, to my understanding, and at least, I don't want to speak for Paul, but I think for staff's understanding, that, you know, you could not separate political signs and create separate regulations just for political signs because you're inherently doing that based on the content of those signs.
Yeah, you can, because political expression is protected speech, and it falls under a special category of free speech. I'm sorry, I don't know where that takes us.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, I don't want to see us get backed into a corner because this, this comes up every year during elections, and particularly in presidential years, where communities try and regulate signs and, like, you know, housing developments, for example, will try and put regulations on where signs can be placed and how long they can be there, and they go to court and they lose. And it's, it's, it's just, political speech is protected speech. It's different than, you know, house for sale.
Dave, I do not disagree with you that political speech is different speech, and that applies not only to advocacy of political candidates, it also applies to political messages. What I do think you have the ability to do is, as we do currently, which is to create regulations that determine the appropriate size of signs based upon various zoning districts, so that what would be permitted in a residential zoning district might be different than what is permitted in a commercial zoning district.
I think you can do that.
I think you can also do, as the ordinance suggests, is that you could, you can create a political season in which you are permitted to have more signs than you would have any other time. But what, what you cannot do is to eliminate individuals' ability to have a personal expression or a political expression that is required to be permitted at any time. So, and that's what this ordinance does.
Okay, I'm just suggesting, I think it's something, make sure John's good with it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure you can regulate the number of signs someone can put on their yard. I mean, if I want to support 20 candidates and I want to put 20 signs in my front yard, I don't think we have the ability to prevent someone from doing that.
You know what? I, I, we will run that question past the solicitor.
Because otherwise, you're telling me.
The field of barnhouse over at Bethel.
Well, right, you're telling me then I've got to pick and choose as to which candidate I'm more supportive of if you're telling me how many signs, you know, either that or I'm going to try, not me personally, someone's going to get creative, is going to try to skirt it by, you know, creating a bigger sign that's going to have five or six candidates on it or whatever, which then will put you in violation of the size limitation, so.
But let me, let us do this. Let us, give us an opportunity. We'll have this discussion with the solicitor and.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I can just, I remember seeing a number of papers, if you will, on political sign display from various organizations, and they single out a lot of those issues. So, but let's check with John before we get too involved in that piece of it.
Because usually those cases are homeowners association cases where the homeowners association tries to keep people putting the signs up. It's usually, that's where the case law usually comes out on the political signs, not as much the municipalities.
So, we have just more examples here of these temporary signs that effectively become permanent.
But see, if you look at the posts that are supporting these signs, it gives you some idea about why these signs are there.
Right. You know, these are all throughout the Route 19 corridor and even some of our major arterial streets outside of it. This Howard Hannah for sign, for example, Berkshire Hathaway, CBRE, I mean, you see a number of these.
The one across the street there, that one across the street where the.
Sorry, I can't, I'm just speaking.
Where the Highmark Building is, that one's been there for at least eight years because I've seen it every day that I've taken my daughter to daycare, and she'll be eight tomorrow, so it's been there at least that long.
But this, this, can you go down for the next one? This sign here that sits at the Crossroad Shopping Center, as you can see, has been up so long that the, the paint has faded on the sign. And, and you know, my experience is that, and I would encourage council to look if you drive around, I do not see these type of for-lease signs throughout other communities. This is something unique to Peters Township, these large signs that have been up for a long time.
That was the breadth of my presentation for you this evening. Do you have any other questions about any other portions of your sign ordinance? Happy to answer.
I do, Mr. Coons.
Of course.
Of course, you know I do because I sent them to you earlier. Mr. Lauer was kind enough to answer many of them, but I do have a couple of points I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
You talked about monument signs for residential plans.
Yeah.
And one of the concerns that I had about that was that many of our plans have two entrances.
Yes.
And I had inquired whether it might make sense to sign both of those so that people knew where they were coming and going from. I think that's a reasonable thought. I'm not sure we have to do it when you transition from one plan to another when they're connected, but I do think that if, for example, Hamlet of Springdale has a few entrances.
Oh, yes.
So, I would think that putting a monument at each entrance would be a reasonable expectation.
Well, I will say, this is the line, that's the non-residential section.
Seth, when you speak, you need to speak.
I apologize. I was somewhat talking to myself on that one. I do apologize.
It doesn't work.
No, talking to yourself with a couple of.
Right. Let me see here, I'm looking to see, I'm in our monument sign section, and I know we accommodate for multiple entrances for commercial districts. We might need to take a look and see if we, if we have not done that for residential districts, I think that is a very good comment.
Okay, and then the other thing about the temporary signs for the leases, I agree with at least making them bigger, but I wondered, was, is that the best solution for the business community? I certainly think these are inappropriate in the duration, but would there be any other way to accommodate that so that the business owners could advertise, either rotate it somehow or make them all standard a certain size, not as big as that?
Well, I will say that, you know, all of these commercial properties are allotted a certain size for their monument signs.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they could potentially utilize a larger portion inside of their monument sign. You know, if they have these tenant panels for individual tenants, they could replace those tenant panels as those units become available with these for-lease signs. Many of these properties have electronic variable message signs that they could utilize that for lease and for sale. And those units that do not have electronic variable message signs could also apply for a standard temporary sign permit and put up a larger for-sale or for-lease sign, granted that would be time duration based on just, because it's a temporary sign permit, but they could do them for two weeks at a time, and they could do up to six times per year. So, we feel that they have kind of different options outside of just this additional allotment that we're proposing to advertise different spaces for sale or for lease.
With the addition of the two-foot sign to the marquee that you're.
Yes.
We might allow, is that in addition to the total signage on the marquee?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's a little bit of a benefit.
Yeah, I mean, go back to this, this example here on the left, if you look at the astrology sign, you know, theoretically, it would be an additional two feet they could put at the bottom or something to help them out. Same thing, if you can see this Lakeside Plaza sign over here, if there was space below it or maybe even above it, they could put an additional little placard there advertising space for lease.
And if you have, if you're, have a storefront that has a window, you can always place a sign in the window.
Yeah.
To accomplish that as well.
Well, and I, the method behind my questioning is, right now, we obviously know that there are a lot of businesses struggling.
Correct.
And landlords struggling with trying to fill vacancies, and I would hate for us to try to make it even more difficult. So, that's why I was advocating that perhaps we make them a little bigger or give them some other way to try to fill those vacancies. Thank you for your answers.
Of course.
Oh, I did have one last question.
Yes.
So, if this is passed, all the people who are violating, like all these signs and anything that's not according to it, the ordinance, will people need to change or are they grandfathered?
That's an interesting question.
That's a question that we do not have the answer to yet with regard to these because these are supposedly temporary signs. And so, one of the things we've been working with Mr. Smith on is an answer to that question. So, if, if you had a permanent size that became non-conforming, it could stay there. The question is, can a temporary sign that becomes non-conforming stay there? And we don't have the answer to that yet.
Okay, thank you.
I think you apply a temporary time to it and say, within the next 15 minutes, which is this temporary period.
No, no, that's why, that's why there's a term for this.
Yeah, okay. Does any other council member have a question?
I do not.
Okay, we'll accept the motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, okay, hearing's closed. Thank you, Seth. Very good job.
You're allowed to stay if you want to.
Most people do, I mean, it's. Okay, stenographer, we are finished.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next item is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of July 13th.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Approval of the transcript of the public hearing held on June 22nd.
So moved. Second.
Questions approved in favor?
Aye.
Posed, okay. Special reports, there are none. Audience comments, we continue our practice of not accepting live people here to comment, but anybody that does have a comment can send it to the township by email or mail, and they will be shared with council. We have comments tonight, Mr. Lauer?
We have one sitting. This is an email from Joseph Modell in Alexandria, Austin. This is to let you know our opinion about the new aquatic center. It is not amending that we, as residents of Peters Township, would ever use. Additionally, given all the unknowns regarding the pandemic, we do not believe that this is the current reasonable expenditure of township monies. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to present our opinions before tonight's board meeting.
Thank you very much. We have another letter?
No, the other actually, I do not believe it was intended as a audience comment. It was a letter that was sent to, and I was going to bring it up under correspondence. I got this today. It's a letter concerning the Taylor-Malaski Group Home on 118 Greenbrier, and the request was to.
Okay, we'll take.
To all the councils.
Okay, we'll take care of that under correspondence then. All right, unfinished business, there is none. New business, we have a request from the Peters Township School District to allow 10 buses to exit McMurray School via Meadowbrook Circle.
So, the school district is in the process of putting together their plan for school in light of the pandemic. It would appear at this point that they will be opening up school for in-class attendance, and that's still to be determined for sure, but that's where they are right now. One of the things that the school district did was they surveyed the parents of the school students and asked a number of questions. One of those questions they asked was, if in fact, school opens, how do you intend to have your children be transported to school? And the result of that, depending on, on the school, it was somewhere between 55 and 65% of parents intended to transport their kids by car. So, with that in mind, you know, we all, anybody who travels east of McMurray Road when school opens or when school lets out knows that it's already a challenge, and that challenge is often going to become greater. I had asked the school district whether there was anything that we could do to attempt to assist with regard to this, and the one request that they had that had to deal with McMurray Elementary School, as I understand, there are about 800 students at that school, and half of them are driving there. There's already a lot of parents who drive kids to the school.
I hope it's not the kids that are driving. I hope it's not the kids that are driving.
Well, no, it's their parents, but it will be, it will be a lot of cars into this space, and it not only impacts. And it not only impacts how quickly cars can get out, it also impacts how quickly the buses get out. And so what the request from the school district is, when the school was built, there was an entrance onto Meadowbrook Circle that is gated off. And what they'd like to be able to do is to open that gate in the afternoon and have 10 school buses use that gate so that those buses can go down Meadowbrook Circle and eventually get to Beep Off Road. I personally don't think that that's an unreasonable request. Anytime that we've asked about, you know, have approached the neighborhood about opening that gate in the past, you know, people's preferences, not that bus traffic come through their plan. But I don't think these are normal times and I don't think this is an unreasonable request for the length of time that the school district is dealing with.
It's going to be limited time.
Limited time, as of right now, afternoon only.
How do we ensure that people picking up their kids after school aren't going to just go down there? And what's the thought there?
Well, what I'm going to do is talk to the school district because somebody physically has to open that gate. And we're going to find a way to separate those cars from those buses so that in fact, people don't cut through them.
I mean, it seems to me to be a completely reasonable request. And I'll make the motion that we grant the school district's request to allow 10 buses to exit McMurray School via Meadowbrook Circle after school for the 2020-2021 school year.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
Just one last question. Were they planning to adjust time so that the buses could go first or were they doing anything to try to?
I do not know the answer to that. I think the intention is to locate the buses in a portion of a parking lot that points them this way, so.
Because the parking lot for the buses is on the other side of the building.
Yes, I understand.
So just so I'm clear, so someone will be at the gate to make sure it's just buses only exit?
And I can make, I can make sure that that happens. I will talk to the school district to make sure that they understand the need to keep the gate locked and someone be there as the buses.
Is 10 buses all they ever use or is this just some percentage of the buses?
I think it's some percentage of the buses that actually service this, you know, this end of the, of the, you know, the students are coming from that end of the township. Some of them are still coming out of East McMurray Road.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is there any discussion about anything they can do with the high school?
You know, I was, had this discussion with Chief Grimes. I know the school district is working at a bunch of different aspects of this. But the one that I think we need to be paying attention to ourselves here is this traffic question on East McMurray Road. So, you know, my discussion with Chief Grimes is I have an expectation that the police department is going to ponder this closely. And we ought to be able to see within the first week how big of a problem we have. And we're going to have to adjust traffic patterns to address that. We need to get the traffic off of East McMurray Road. We need to have the congestion inside the parking areas, not on the road.
Yeah, well, the last time we tried that, if you recall, didn't work out well.
The high school's a very difficult place.
Yes, it is.
Because of the number of cars you're talking about and the way you access East McMurray Road. But we're going to have to make a special effort down there. In many regards, the high school may not be worse than it always has been because there are so many people who drive to that school already, so.
I don't know. I mean, it's.
And the worst part's going to be with all the kids, parents driving the kids to PV afterwards.
Yeah. Well, it's not going to be happy for a while, that's for sure. Okay, the next item is to accept the resignation of Terrence Luddy, his member of the Peters Township Youth Commission.
Moving we accept Mr. Luddy's resignation with regrets, wish him well.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approve the municipal winter traffic services agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
This is a state-wide agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. It comes up once every five years. The numbers that are in that contract are a slight escalation over what we were paid for the prior year. Quite frankly, it is like we have a lot of alternatives because if you choose not to enter into this agreement, each of these roads will be very low priority for the, for the state of Pennsylvania.
Mr. Lauer, may I ask a question about that? Given that this is a multi-year agreement and we have several plans, new plans along state roads, I'm thinking of just about as an example. We're sort of stranding those residents. Is there any ability, is there any ability to potentially, would public works have the capacity to potentially expand the contract and take on anything else? And that might not be the primary road, but maybe there are other places.
Well, the primary roads that we don't do are Route 19, Venetia Road, West McMurray Road. And those I would not suggest that we take over. We don't have the capacity to do those. I can speak to Mr. Hirst. I can tell you this, with the state of Pennsylvania, you want to add a road, they'll add a road to this contract at any time. Because their preference is not to do them.
Well, and I, the question is about, do we have capacity to do it? You know, would the additional money cover the expenses of the labor? And would that be something that we should be thinking about for the residents on those new, in those new plans?
Well, I would like to be able to speak to Mr. Hirst. And I would not hesitate to go ahead with this contract. But like I said, there is never a problem adding, adding the rest.
Okay, I didn't want to hold up the contract. I was asking whether it could have an addendum.
Yes.
Okay. Then I move that we authorize the township officials to execute the municipal winter traffic services agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Appointment of Breznerhan Finnegan, Breznerhan, PC, as special counsel for the purpose of acquiring right of way along Manor Way.
Mr. Chairman, we've pondered this issue for off and on for about two years now. So I'll recommend and I'll move that we appoint Breznerhan Finnegan and Breznerhan as special counsel for the purpose of acquiring the right of way along Manor Way.
I'll second. Okay. Here you are, Frank, okay.
You already did.
Yes, I think we've been.
So what you did was you authorized me to go get prices from Breznerhan. And it's not that this owner does it kind of out of his.
Okay. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Last item is the award of a contract for design of the Rolling Hills Park Aquatic Center.
So last Monday, we gathered with, sorry, to interview three firms for the purpose of designing the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center. The thing that I, that I would say is that I am confident that any of those three firms have the capabilities of undertaking this project and doing it well. The real question, I think, before council considers whether or not it wishes to award a contract is, is a determination as to whether or not this is the appropriate time to build a pool in the Rolling Hills Park. You know, the thing that I think council has been very clear around up to this point is reflected in the master plan. There's not a question about whether or not an aquatic center is going to be built there because the master plan calls for that. And until the master plan would be amended to eliminate that, our goal would be at some point in time to build an aquatic center. And like I said, I think the real threshold question before council decides whether or not they, who it is they would like to design this center, if anyone, is, does council want to move ahead with this project at this point?
Okay, so we have two questions, as Mr. Lauer indicated. The first before us is, is now the time that we wish to move ahead? And secondly, should the answer to that be yes? Then the determination is, which of the three people that we talked to last week, if any, do we wish to author, authorize Mr. Lauer to negotiate a contract with and then come back to council with that contract? Everybody clear about our two questions? So the first question. Do we need a motion for first?
Now we think so.
Yeah, yeah, we do. We did. So I'm just saying, the first question then is, is now the time that we wish to move ahead with this? So we'll accept a motion on whether yes or no.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move ahead with continuing the process of building an aquatic center at the park.
Second.
I don't, I don't think there'd be a better time with interest rates as low as they are. And five years from now, 10 years from now, it's going to cost significantly more than it would at this time.
Motion, there's a second, there's a discussion. Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
We have four to three. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, so four to three, we move ahead. Secondly, the, there are three people that presented and I'm not sure how the best way to, to do this, since, how about, well, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Well, I mean, they all were excellent presentations and, but I'm going to have to go along with the feeling of, of what township manager and our professionals are leaning towards. So I'm going to make a motion that we have township personnel get together a contract with Kimball Bogret.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded, discussion?
I'd like to also say that all three of the firms certainly brought their best as far as the opportunities that they felt were afforded in their plans to bring this thing forward. But I was most impressed with Kimball's, in essence, openness with regard to bringing forth new ideas or adventuring into things that weren't necessarily as they were described in the master plan. And I look forward to that originality.
Okay, moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four to nothing. Okay, so, Mr. Lauer, you were authorized to negotiate with them. Okay. Next item is payroll and bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the payroll report and the bills. In addition to routine payments, there are still a significant number of refunds for programs that were canceled or permits that were withdrew, withdrawn. The credit card statement was shared in the docket. If you have any questions about that, Mr. Lauer might be able to respond. But other than that, I move that we approve the payables as presented.
Second.
Discussion, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, seven, nothing, correspondence. We have the letter that we previously mentioned.
Yes, and what this letter is, the reason why it came in today and the reason I brought it is that, you know, I think it's timely. The Taylor-Malaski Group Home has been a site where we've had a number of problems. And that has resulted in criminal charges and the arrest of the individual who occupied that home. And as best I understand, that individual is still in Washington County jail. So what this is telling you is that Joanne Moore will be testifying in those cases and that there's a commitment that the people involved in this will not be back in that home. But we continue to have a problem with Taylor-Malaski. And it isn't because we haven't done our due diligence in terms of keeping the Department of Human Services aware of what's happening there. I don't know what more I can tell you about this, so.
Paul, are they required to let us know who the residents are living in your town?
No, because again, the Fair Housing Act, that person moving into that house is no different than anybody else moving into a home in Peters Township.
Don't we require? Don't we require an occupancy permit for renters or is that not, because that?
We do not require occupancies for rental properties. We don't require occupancies for any property beyond the initial occupancy of the residential structure.
The problem I have with it, and I know there's, we've talked about this and we've tried to do things, but you know, you have an individual like that's delineated in this email. And I mean, and then, you know, you finally, you know, contact somebody and you file a complaint with the Department of Human Services and then they get a guarantee from the group home that none of these people, this woman will never be on the property again. All they're doing is kicking her someplace else that's going to cause it to next community.
In fact, the.
That doesn't seem right to me.
And I, I'll tell you what, this, this system fails to treat people with the proper respect and service that they need, these disabled individuals. This, this individual's actually from the Philadelphia area. And she was, she was moved out here against her wishes and away from our family. And she, and as I understand it, she has a mental disability. And as a result of that, I think that's why you see this behavior because of the situation that she has been put in and she's not capable of dealing with it.
No, there's no question, Paul.
It's just not, it's not fair to the residents who live on that street and it's not fair to their client.
And it's not fair to anybody. The problem we have in the state now is the Commonwealth decided they didn't want to be in the business of taking care of mentally disabled people anymore. So they closed Mayview, they closed Woodville, and they closed all those other places. And unfortunately, the state seemed to think that when they closed those places, the problem was going to go away. What they did is they made the problem worse.
Worse, yes.
And you have these poor individuals who have these disabilities that are being shifted from one house to another. You know, they can't at any point ever get themselves comfortable in a location. I mean, how do people expect they're going to act? And you're right, it's terrible for the residents. It's terrible for the people that are in these homes. But until the Supreme Court says that anyone can do anything about it, this is a situation we're going to live with.
Well, I think that at some point, there's got to be a way that these places can be declared nuisances or, or, you know, a nuisance dwelling. If this was, if this was another, another individual, and this was a rental property, and that individual was causing this kind of a problem, it wouldn't last this length of time.
Right, but you're not dealing with a protected class, David, that's the problem.
Yeah, but I think beyond that, I'm not even sure that I would agree with Mr. Paul because I can point to other locations in Peters Township where the police department frequent on a regular basis and no one there is disabled. And there's nothing even in those cases that you can do. What gets so difficult here is this behavior is, may seem to be criminal in nature, but it isn't criminal in nature with the intent that we have around other locations where you have someone who supports a drug habit or people stealing from their neighbors, so.
Well, this is, I mean, this stuff has got to stop.
Oh, I agree with Dave.
We can't, the people on this street have been subjected to this for how long now?
Long time now.
Years?
Years.
And, and it just simply isn't fair. It's diminished their property values, they can't sell their houses, nobody would buy in this area. It's a, you know, and nobody wants to listen to it. People in the state are, you know, congratulating themselves that they've done a wonderful job and they're killing the people on the street. It's terrible. I think that, you know, Representative Mahalik apparently has been to, you know, the Department of Human Services. I don't know who we need to get involved in it, but it just apparently needs to be escalated beyond that.
But it's a fundamental failure of public policy with regard to people with intellectual disabilities.
Well, and it's a fundamental failure about the way the Fair Housing Act was drafted. You know, there is no way, you cannot tell me that when Congress drafted the Fair Housing Act, that this is what they had in mind is how that you could have five or six of these group homes in one neighborhood.
No.
You know, it makes no sense.
Well, I don't know, but we need to, we need to do something. This is just unacceptable. Okay.
So, the other letter in there is a review from Enoch Jenkins, it's a letter to Mark Somitus with reference to a sanitary sewer extension that's needed to service Rolling Hills Park. That extension is going to require the, the acquisition of a right-of-way that will eventually be owned by the sanitary authority to be able to do this sewer line. Where this, this, I mean, an easement, I mean, this easement is actually located on what was a paper street off of Plumside Drive. And what I would like to be able to do with council's permission, the sanitary authority is much more adept at acquiring these types of easements. They do this on a somewhat regular basis. And what I would like to do is approach the sanitary authority and ask them to take the lead in acquiring this for our benefit, and have the township cover the expenses associated with it. When the sewer line is eventually put into Rolling Hills Park, it's our intention to actually do this construction. There would be a manhole at the property line, and we would turn over this portion of the sanitary sewer line to the, to the authority for them to maintain at that point. I don't have a problem with that.
That makes sense.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Do you need a motion, or can you just...
No, it's, that, it senses a doubt.
All righty, it's sensed. Anybody want to talk about anything under reports?
Well, I saw we have one more letter.
There's one more letter there.
A letter about deer calling, and I agree with the letter. It has become a ridiculous problem again in this township, and I think we did calling probably, what, 10 years ago?
Yep.
I think we need to do it again.
Yep.
Because it's to the point...
It's still ongoing.
Is it? We need to opt it or something, because I mean, it's to the point now where...
We still have the archery program.
Yes, that's right, we still have the archery. And that's actually been fairly effective.
Now, we need to do some more, because we're, I totally agree with this.
Do we only limit it to the park?
No.
No.
We were...
People.
As well. In this town, there's ground that's hunted, it's getting hunted.
No, there needs to be hunted more, because I don't know whether it was this winter, because the winter was so mild that no deer died off, but I mean, it's to the point, and I say this from my personal perspective, I mean, my shrubs, everything is just completely gone.
I agree, we've got the same issue.
And the weather, Mother Nature just didn't do her job this past winter, or what, but...
Mr. Chairman, they don't have any space.
You have 50 acres for public access.
Hey, you want to come over anytime, seriously?
Part of the problem is...
I don't, my parents have the 50 acres, let's be...
Right, part of the problem is the number of developments. They're being squeezed out of areas. There's a concentration in the plan where we live because we have open space, because just about farms happen, the whispering pines happen, so they have nowhere to go. So, it's, it's a problem that does need to be addressed.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, you know, I love, you know, deer are nice, but like anything, it's like alcohol, good in moderation, you know?
There you go. Could I make a comment? In signing the checks, I noticed something that was a bit of a change in the police department. Has that, has that changed about assignments?
Pat Masato, Pat Masato is going to be in the SRO. I don't know what the question...
Where are we at on the agenda?
The question was, we had, no, it was under the, under the police reports.
Oh, okay.
Inquiring, I expected that would have been something that was stated, that there was a change in assignment. The officer who was the SRO for the middle school has stepped down to a part-time position.
Right, yes, and, and Pat Masato is going to assume that position at the middle school.
He'll be very in that position.
I agree.
Yes, he will.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up, I think he needs to be vocalized, that I think he'll be a great person for that. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Miscellaneous?
The last meeting, council expressed a desire to look at a joint meeting with the Peters Township School District, had a chance to talk to Dr. French. She said one thing about the school board has, I think everybody could probably appreciate given the challenge they're faced with, they have been needing extensively, and, and the first opportunity to meet will be sometime after August 3rd, so if council wanted to, we could technically set up that meeting. I can't tell you what day of the week it'll be.
August 3rd is like next week, guys.
Yeah, but it's going to be, it's going to be after that, so, and we have a meeting on the 10th, so it could be the 7th.
I don't, I don't really want to meet, personally. I think we can just run any questions that we have through the superintendent.
I'm absolutely with you, Frank.
Yeah, I don't see why Dr. French just can't come here and...
Right.
Come to a meeting, come in next week.
And we need rillers.
No, I don't want rillers.
You don't want rillers?
Just ask them their own questions, and she'll give us the, I'll give us the answers.
Well, I was looking, I raised the issue because I thought perhaps mutually we'd be interested in how the Rolling Hills Road was going for their part, and how Rolling Hills High School was going, and what their plans are. If we think we have traffic problems now, if the high school opens, I think there needs to be a conversation before that opens about if they decide to give out 400 parking permits to students, how are we going to manage that? So, we don't have to do it in August, but I think at some time before the end of this year, we should have a conversation.
Well, I think that would better be served when we have a better feel for where we're going to be with the entrance road.
Fine with me.
When's the anticipated date for the opening of the new high school?
January 21, 21.
Yes, it's when they return from school after the Christmas parade, so...
January 21.
This year.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, and I, the thing about the road in particular, the, the school district certainly has an interest in that road, and we try to keep them informed of what its status is. If you go by there, what you'll see is the crossing of the stream is in, the new crossing is in place, the, the construction of the new relocated stream is done. So, very shortly, what you're going to see is work again up against East McMurray Road, and that project is on schedule and will be done in time for, for school to open, so I know in having talked with the building inspectors, as well as having talked with Dr. French and Brad Brow, they believe the school project in fact will be done and be able to be opened in time for the, for the beginning of next year, so...
My understanding is the academic centers will be available to use?
Yes.
If that road, what is going to proceed, we should probably warn people that all the trees will be disappearing.
No, I, I think they're going to understand that next week, because I think they're going to see them begin to disappear next week.
Okay, anything for next agenda?
I, I just have one miscellaneous item. Has, has anyone seen the new roundabout off of Baker Road?
Baker Road? Oh, the one up north?
Do yourselves a favor and go take a trip over to that roundabout. Tell me roundabouts don't help. It's unbelievable, it's beautiful. You know, it's that, that four-way stop sign intersection with Reganza Road and Baker Road and...
The four-way stop sign.
Yeah.
The four-way stop sign.
It's, well, the whole thing's unbelievable.
Not a three-way or four-way.
It's very nice.
You probably had the, the space to do it. That seems to be our problem a lot of times, is...
Yeah, that was a four-way intersection.
Yeah. Stupid, but it's going to be awesome on this.
Well, they had to do extensive because that was a terrible hill, too, going up to the cemetery.
Right. Yeah, they changed the, when you pull up, you know, when you come down Baker, Baker Road, and you pull it, and you go, wow, it's like, it's like a totally different place.
Mr. Lauer, I had a question, and based on your involvement with the tax collection group, whether there was any further activity about the state trying to potentially usurp that? There's so much going on and coming out of the governor's office, I just...
As far as we understand, that, that effort's all been...
Okay, that would be good to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else? Next agenda?
What about what's going on in Courtney? Did you ever have an opportunity to, I think Mrs. Merrill asked about shoring up some sort of an agreement?
I have not yet had that agreement drafted, but we are going to move ahead with the signs, so, but I believe that agreement drafted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no executive session?
No, we do.
No.
Wow.
Okay.